I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Debbie, we have the council here and I wanted to recognize Chris Doty, Theodore Scott, and Officer Trent. Anybody else from the city? Alright. There'll be two changes to the agenda. One will be the current claims. The mountain will go up a little bit and also I am removing, we are removing, the flat of tracks A, B, and C of block H in new business. Can I get a motion?
Sooner.
Second.
Passes. Amendments from September 15.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion carried.
All in favor.
All in favor? Sorry. Motion carried. Claims in between $194,751 and 29 cents. That one doesn't change.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Current claims, there is an addition of $7,038 to Southern Hills Painting for the depot. It's 75 percent of their payment. And that came in today, so Debbie added it to the current claims. And it is now $163,915.35. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Questions?
Oh, all are questions.
I assume we made the final payment for the lighter hanger. Was the bunch list totally completed before we made that final payment?
I don't know. They didn't have any problems. They had gravel that was being pushed up and seeing tighter to the door. And then there were two metal tubes and then they can adjust something on the door. So it's kind of a safety or something.
I thought there was pavement on the inside and outside of the door.
There's pavement inside.
They said that they went lighter on the inside and took some outside as well.
They have gravel there to begin with and I don't know. That's the other part.
Per edit.
Per edit.
He reported to me that it was completed. So... And he was very pleased.
And that was just the last time I was out painting.
Any other discussion on current claims? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Theodore Smith from the Plunge has a communication from the public. Give us an update on your training costs.
Yeah, I figured out the costs to go to Avrata, Colorado for training. In total, it's 1,366 miles, which will take 54 gallons of gas at the current price of $3.45. Gas round trip would be $186.30. The hotel room would be $80 a night. It's three nights long, so that's 240. Between gas and hotel, it's $426.30 for travel costs. With the addition of the licenses that we will be receiving up there, in total, with gas, hotel, and the licenses, the total would be $1,226.30 to travel, to stay, and to get certified.
Can I see your budget?
Yeah.
Yeah, we approved his travel. Carl asked him to give an update on the total cost. Any questions for Theodore? Thank you.
Jordan.
Appreciate you following up on that. Any other communications from the public? I don't know your name, but you were first.
Karen Shepherd.
Hi Karen.
Hi.
You're welcome to stand up or speak up.
I just moved here three weeks ago. Okay, I'm trying to learn your ordinances. I'm trying to learn all this stuff.
Okay.
On Saturday, I had your animal control officer at my door scaring the shit out of me because it sounded like I had a police raid going on. I mean, yeah.
Okay. Our animal control officer?
Yes. I, like I said, I'm trying to learn your ordinances. Yes, my dogs were barking. I'm trying to control it. I mean, they're not out of control barking. Other dogs start barking. They start barking. I felt very threatened by him with the way that he said things to me. And when I tried to get a better understanding of how y'all's ordinances work, he claimed that I was being argumental with him. I'm trying to, better yet, correct the problem of my dog's barking. But my problem is, I can't correct a problem that's not being corrected around me. In the last three days, I've heard at least 10 other dogs barking. And I don't find it fair that I have him coming to my door the way he did. But I don't feel that anybody else is getting the treatment that I did.
Okay, I would, you know, if you want to share your address and the date and things like that, I can follow up on that. Or if you want to, if you're at City Hall, that's fine too.
I actually talked to the chief of police today.
Okay.
The date was October 4. And according to his ticket, it was approximately 9 o'clock in the morning, which it actually was after 10. I'm going to assume the people that lived there before me, he assumed, was still there because he had everything addressed out. But it wasn't to me. It was to somebody else. I mean, yes, I have a Cory living in my household. But I have no last name on the tick, I'm sorry, it's not a ticket, it's a warning, nothing. And again, I didn't even know he was an animal control officer, even a police officer. No uniform, no nada. And, you know, again, I mean, instead of walking up my stairs to my house, he drove up a driveway that says "No Trespassing" and came through my dog enclosure instead of to my front door. So I'm just, Saturday really threw me for a loop around here.
And you made a police report with the chief today?
I, no, I called him and talked to him about what happened.
Okay.
And he said he was gonna follow up on it and get back to me. This was at like 12:30 today. I've yet to hear anything back. That's why I'm here. I mean...
Okay.
What time was it during the day that this happened?
He... He has 9 o'clock down on here. It was after 10 o'clock that he actually approached my door with anything.
AM or PM?
AM.
Okay.
And like I said, I mean, he has a name on here of Cory. But the Cory that's in my household don't own the dogs. The dogs are mine. And I mean, he gave me his version of the ordinance, not your actual ordinance that's out there, but his version of it. And again, I find this very threatening, that you can sit there and tell me that my dogs are deemed a nuisance for barking. One time you come up to talk to me and that if I don't get this under control, you can and will destroy my animals. This is also what I got from him.
Can I have that? Or a copy of it?
I don't have a copy with me.
Can you come to City Hall tomorrow and we'll make a copy of that?
Do you want a copy of that and this, or just...
Yes.
Okay, I can do that.
And I'll talk to the chief about it because I, you know, I'm hearing this for the first time, so I don't really know what the situation is. And I, of course, would talk to the animal control officer as well.
Right.
And see if we have a misunderstanding or we have a policy issue.
Right, and like I said, I'm not trying to be this way, but enforce it all the way around me. I'm an easy target. I'm on a hill. I have three dogs. I can't hide them in the backyard. But everybody else can.
Well, I'm on a hill, so I don't think that's a reason.
I'm just saying, I mean...
Let me look into it. And if you have time, I'd appreciate you coming down to City Hall at some point and I'll get copies of that and talk to the chief about it and we'll talk to animal control. I like to get all sides to a story before I take any action on it, so...
Right, but...
Did he say there was a complaint from a neighbor?
He said there, I'm sorry, from the chief of police I heard today. He said he was working Saturday. He said they had multiple calls, not multiple people complaining, but multiple calls. And I'm gonna be honest with you, I'm pretty sure I know who called because the guy has already flat out told me that he doesn't like us. And it goes back to, yeah, something that I have no control over that was before me. And he's already threatened us that where we parked our camper was an ordinance issue. And again, this is my assumption, that because he couldn't find an ordinance on that, he went after my dogs. Today, I fortified my yard to where my dogs can't see anything, so they have nothing to bark at unless other dogs bark. And he was sitting there watching the whole time, so I'm just waiting for somebody to come up and tell me what I did is against an ordinance.
Are you available to bring that in tomorrow?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. And we do that and I'll look at it and get the other side of the story and...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just, like I said...
No, that's okay.
It's just frustrating when I feel like I, like everybody else around me can do, but I can't.
Let, I'm gonna get us all communicating on this.
Okay.
And we'll see what really happened and see if we have a procedural issue or a communication breakdown or some misunderstanding. I really don't know. I have not heard of this before, so...
Right.
I'd be happy to address it though.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for coming in. Any other communications from the public? Scott?
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, good evening. Scott Davis. Just one quick question. Last Monday, I delivered to City Hall a formal letter of protest. I just want to ask the question, did the council members get theirs?
Yep.
I'm available for discussion at your leisure. If you have any questions, please give me a call. Thank you.
Thanks Scott. Mary, did I see your hand up earlier?
I want to ask a question of the City Council being that you are, we are, the city owns the Plunge, but the City Council seems to be the ones that are running it, from what I understand. And I, well, originally, it was supposed to be another group, and then I asked the old mayor and he said...
Mary, I can barely hear you.
You can barely hear me?
We can't. There's several, including myself, that can't hear you very well up here. So if you want to step forward, we can give you a mic or...
I usually don't need a mic. I'm pretty loud, but can you hear me now?
But I think what you're saying is probably important, so we would like you to...
Well, it's just my usual thing here, but now, I understand, the City Council is the ones who makes the decisions for the Plunge. And I had a question. There are groups, like Friends of Wind Cave, Friends of, I'll speak to the one I belong to, which is Friends of Public Radio and TV. And I have been a member of that, and I'm a member, and they have fundraisers. And I was looking at, when I give to a fundraiser, I don't expect anything in return. I don't expect a towel. I don't expect a locker. I don't expect anything because what I get is quality programming, certain programs that I can't get anywhere else. So every year, when they have a fundraiser, I pay my money. And I was just wondering if the Plunge could do that for certain issues that there might not be money for. Now, I know there's things such as grants, which I'm not too familiar with, but a Plunge, a pledge drive, sort of like they do for, you know, the, where they have the little thing going up.
What's that?
The United Way.
Yeah, United Way, okay.
If they had something like that, and there's a couple of issues that, because I'm a regular member for years, I have heard comments, and some of them don't matter to me, but I hear them from tourists, and then when my friends or family come and say they don't want to go to the Plunge because of those issues, it bothers me. And I'm thinking, why not have a pledge drive? And could we do that? One of the issues is the humidifier. I've had a friend who comes and said, "I smell mold." I don't. It doesn't bother me. But that humidifier system, now I think that's probably a big financial thing, from what I understand. But the other is not such a big issue, and that is the cold showers. Now, I gave up with those. I always used to call them a sissy myself, but now I go home for my hot showers. But I'm thinking, you know, since so many people complain, that would not be a big fundraiser. And could the city or the people on that are connected with the Plunge do something like that? And if they did, I will be the first one to say, "I'll contribute $100 for hot showers," even though I don't use them. That's my question. Can you do something like that? I would be the first one to say, "I'll donate..."
Anybody want to comment on that?
I think we had a donation from a lot of different people at the beginning, and we were trying to encourage different things, but I've had other people say they'd like to donate towards a hot water heater also, Mary. And as far as the council, they can all make decisions on it. I think more directs to Theodore, not to us directly, so...
Oh, I understood though, it had to be, everything has to be approved by the council.
We approve it, brother.
Budget. But Theodore actually makes those decisions through the mayor. So we do have the advocacy group, and we talk to them that way. And the Friends are invited to come to that too, but we do have the Friends Committee.
Yes, I'm aware of that.
It's just a little different now.
Right, I can't make that in key, so I thought I'd bring it up here. I'll be down for the first pledge.
Okay, thanks, Mary.
Can I just ask a question about that real quick? So if a person were to make donations, means, I asked you, I think, about this before Cindy, if they were to make a donation, say specifically for the Plunge, for showers, can a donation be ear-tagged for a specific thing, or does it go into the general fund? You know, we talked about that before, didn't know if it could be ear-tagged for something.
We could definitely set it up that it's ear-tagged for that. That's where the, is that a term? Ear-tagged?
I don't know if it is.
Dumb nails or cattle.
It's a valid term.
That's what I meant.
Yeah, I mean, if we're gonna accept a donation, we would definitely put it towards, you know, the person's intent, so... Or organization's intent. You know, Theodore and I can talk about that really so far. Theodore and I are just trying to, you know, keep the Plunge up and running. We're both new to that business, and there's been a lot of change there. Mary, it's a great idea. And the community will definitely know if we are in a position, hopefully soon, to look for donations for specific things like hot showers.
That brings up a question to, when our auditor was here. Those were some of the questions that she had too, and that we needed to make those a little bit more definite. So we're still working on that. How that money is donated and how it's used in any of the places that we are accepting donations.
Do we have anything formally written on that? The only reason I ask is because I do grant stuff. I think when I initially brought it up with Cindy, there's things where I wanted to give money towards law enforcement and stuff, but with my grant stuff, I have to be very specific. So if I say it's going to be used for law enforcement, it has to be used for law enforcement. So I can't give it to you with that intention, but then it isn't. So that's the only reason I ask, if there's anything formally written within our city that allows for that.
And I think Harley was working on that before he passed away. That was one area that needed to be defined.
Okay, thank you.
I do know, when the Mueller Center was built, there's a lot of donations put veterans' names on the law back here. And those were kept someplace for years until we just used it this year. So I know there's a way of doing it. I don't know how we do it, but there's a way of doing it.
Yeah, I know there's a way to do it because we're doing it for the Splash Pad Fund, so I know there's a way to do it. We're still learning how to be finance officers here.
I don't think we've got anything in writing with regard to earmarking funds in our ordinances. But I don't see that there would be any problem in developing one.
Yeah, we can easily do that in Banyan. I know, from what I've seen of it, so...
Like you said, we've done it for the Splash Park. We've done it for the Allen Wilson Memorial Fund that many has come pro shop with. And they're all designated in the Capital Fund, which you basically...
I think the answer's yes, Mary. Any other communications from the public? Amanda?
I'm gonna come up here. It's gonna be quiet voice.
You're too quiet.
I'm here on behalf of Chedco. I just wanted to say thank you all for financial supporting us again. And in conjunction with that, having our communication with the City Council, I'm here to formally ask for a representative to sit on our board from the City Council. So I wanted to bring that to you. Georgia and I have visited about it, but I wanted to bring it to everybody for discussion.
Well, that would be up to you, Madam Mayor.
Well, Amanda and I did talk, and I think you're a great choice. I just feel like you're overloaded. If you want to be more overloaded, I'm okay with that, but I was just, I'd rather, and I know you're all overloaded, you know, but there's, we'll probably talk about it, unless somebody just wants to jump in right here, but I'd like to talk to Georgia about it and just remind her of all the things that are already on her plate. And, you know, I'd like to see those things get done before we maybe, you know, put something else on her plate. You know, we'll talk about it and if she ends up being the best choice.
Yeah, and if questions are, you know, interested in it definitely.
When do you, could you maybe tell the rest of the council what you meet and the expectation?
Right, we meet on the third Friday at noon at Woolies, and it goes from about noon to 1:30. And then there are things, you know, there'll be things throughout the month. We just had a committee meeting last week that we held. So there's a few things, and we're going to have specific committees. I'm in the process of developing that, so membership committee, you know, those kinds of things. The main thing is just to have somebody from the City Council there, so that the communication is there. I think that was an important piece that ends in lacking, so I would like to remedy that. And just to get everybody on the same page. I was just gonna, yeah, I was just gonna say, would you remind everybody where your office is now? It will be in the Black and Silver office. So if you have questions, you can go there. Yes, it will be probably the first of November, so until then, cell phone. And then I also work out of Hartland realty occasionally, so you guys will...
Thanks Amanda, thanks for coming in. I'm gonna talk to Georgia, take her out back and talk to her, being overloaded here. But that's the best we can do. Any other communications from the public? Speak now. Alright.
I'll just give you a heads up. There is going to be a public forum for the November election here at the Mueller Center on October 23 at 7:00 PM. The flyers are being done now, and they'll be posted around town with all the candidates that are gonna be there.
So that's county commissioner, sheriff...
Commissioner, sheriff, judge, and anybody else that's running locally, public district 30.
Thank you. Alright, I'm gonna move to personnel on the agenda. Any questions on that?
All information.
Alright. Go to resolution. Tracy wanted to make sure you all were aware of the grant that he just submitted for Transportation Alternatives Program. The information is in your packet. Basically, the thing you need to be aware of is if we get the grant, it requires some financial backing of the city as well. It's a fairly significant grant, so... It's like 200,000 to 250,000, was it? No, no, it's like... No, not this one. It's like 5%. Local may? I think the most was 20,000. So it's like 10%. 20,000 to 25,000, so... No, you didn't. I'm gonna... But I did discuss it with him, and it's very small for the bank with a lot on this one. So he did get this in. He did get it in on time. And the objective is to extend the Freedom Trail from Evans Pond to Chicago. It? So I believe, per my doc here, that we need to agree to support the grant if we are awarded it. Get a motion?
I'll make a motion that we...
Oh, we just opened ending it. I mean, would it ever come back or not?
No, that's the amount. It would be about 20,000.
Should we add that to that then?
Yes.
It'd be 20,000.
I think it's 25,000. It would be no more than 25 kind of thing. So I can't remember if it's 20 or 25, so that's my bad on that one, but... So I have a second from quiet man over here. Any other discussion?
When would we need to make this money?
It's actually 2016.
2016, so we could budget for it?
Yes. We would budget for 2016. We would know by December, we need to budget for 2016. So yeah, it gives us time to prepare. Any other discussion? Alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried? Thank you for that. That's a good thing. I didn't forget it. The first reading of ordinance 1150, which is rezoning the property. It's actually just up the hill from Evans Pond, from residential to mixed use. You have the information in your packets.
And I'll second it. It used to be, it belonged to the city at one time.
And then went residential, and now we're looking to take it back to mixed.
That had to go a long time ago.
It was in the 70s.
It happened at least in the early 70s.
So I have a second. Any other discussion on that, the first reading? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried? Thank you for that. The program, under new business, we have a travel request from Scott and Jason to attend a safety and loss control training in here, November 12th and 13th.
I'll make a motion to approve that. We've been doing a lot with the safety manual, and I really appreciate getting that updated and getting people trained, especially people that are working with chemicals and stuff. So I think this is really important.
Is that what it's for?
For a lot of the safety issues.
Fertilizer. It is me a package.
I can address that if you'd like.
It looks like this.
Why wouldn't we send somebody from the street shop if it's to do fertilizer or different things?
There was actually, Harley did make reservations for three, and we just don't have the 31st someone's. So...
I have a second motion.
Should someone, what about cyber risk? Something from business or safety or something?
I think Scott would probably be able to help us with that.
Wouldn't she deal with all the procedures and things?
Both cyber and some personal.
I don't know what we can do with that. It'll be for three days. And soon. There was, I mean, there was reservations for three.
Maybe Harley has planned that.
We don't know if Harley was gonna go, or if you want someone else from City Hall to go. If that's the consensus. I could go if we feel somebody from City Hall should go.
I think Street.
Or Streets, or...
Yeah, that would be...
I'm open to suggestions. I don't know who he intended for the 31st.
Well, I guess I don't know. Huge Trump, some don't know. Mass labs, contracts, special mass liability, workers' comp, ergonomics, cyber risk.
Especially that's what we have to see. Paul probably for the temporary alcohol. All probably for the temporary alcohol expenses that were...
Where were Tracy fit into this, I guess?
Tracy's not going.
It's Jason Happy.
Oh, Jason Happy.
We know where Jason's at.
I was saying, why, where does Jason fit in there?
Well, he's part of the Employee Safety Committee. All the department heads are a committee member.
He does manage special events.
If you decide since anyone else could be approved for three, you decided to...
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I have not talked to Jason about this at all, so I don't, I don't... Can you enlighten me, Scott?
Well, as a committee member, I was wanting two of us to go. Basically, a hit-by-the-truck scenario. If something happens to me and we need to keep this program going, the two of us should be trained. And Jason is, Jason is in the, in the field, he has employees. He is in a work environment that loss control and risk management plays a big part. So I see him as a player on it.
I think any department head fit in the, you know, that.
Exactly. That's why the department heads are a committee member.
Do you want to talk about two or three people going and then we look at the two or three again? Or, you know, I'm open to any kind of suggestion. I did not organize this, so I...
Well, I think we should go ahead and approve for three. And if we don't get a third one or you don't choose a third one, then it'd be just the two. Scott and Jason.
I'm in my motion group for three people.
All in favor of three traveling to the safety and loss control training conference?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried? Thank you. And I'm open to suggestions on the 31st. We have a, oh, 7:15. I can see this in the middle here, sorry, without that.
It's a set one.
Oh, two set? Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you for that. I was just confused by the boys and girls needing an alcohol beverage license. Screwed me a little bit there. So, does anybody want to make a motion to allow that public hearing on this one? Any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Motion carried? The next item is the purchase of golf course lot 115. It's for a description here, unbuildable for the covenants of the golf course properties. It has a sewer line going through it. Maybe Scott, you could help me here if I'm not doing this right. But we have decided, and I believe Carol discussed this with you all the last meeting, that we were making an offer to purchase this.
No, no.
We're not making an offer.
We didn't discuss it.
Okay. Between?
It was talked about in public works before Harley passed through.
Okay.
And they've come in, and at that time, we didn't think there was even a sewer main running through that. It's just residential.
The sewer main goes through the easement. And then they stubbed it off that's on the private.
And there's two of them.
But that just stubbed off. The main, the main goes through the easement.
The easement is only for...
The drainage.
...cattle with drainage. The easement does not include the sewer line that runs on a diagonal through the property. With the, with the lot.
So what sewer line through the property?
I didn't work on it.
I don't think the city did either.
I think our city engineer worked on that at that time. But at any rate, it's there. The lot is not buildable. It's not part of the assessment. But if somebody does end up buying it, they can have us remove it because it's not a declared part of the easement. And you could end up in a lawsuit over it, so I just, for 2,500 bucks, that's better than a $50,000 lawsuit.
They're asking 5,000. We have a contract sitting on my desk waiting for signature and easement or earnest money for 2,500. We are not offering the full 5,000, you know.
My question is, that sewer line continues up the hill farther, correct, Scott? I mean, does it cross other lots with just a drainage easement in it? That people are gonna want us to come buy those lots too?
No. That comes from Sandpiper Drive and right below where Steve Shimonick's house was. He sold that long ago, whoever owns that now. But right below that, excuse me, that's where the lift station originally was. This area that we're talking about here was developed a little bit later than that, so they actually took that lift station out and took it down to the bottom of this golf course lot, 115, and then took that eight-inch sewer line along the fairway. And so it's on City, right away City property, along that fairway, entered into this golf course lot, 115, and in that drainage. And took it, well, a little bit in, a little bit out of the drainage, as I remember it. And then put that lift station down at the bottom of Cardinal Drive. And in that lift station, we have a two-inch force main that takes it back up Cardinal Drive to where it can get gravity sewer again. And so that is why this happened. And it wasn't the city that did it. It was still Steve Shimonick, the developer, and his contractor that was doing this. And so they put it in a drainage easement. The drainage easement is for overland drainage, for stormwater and such. It's not for underground utilities. Utility easement is, you know, for underground. And we have access easements, utility easements, drainage easements, different kinds. But the letter from Keith Anderson, Anderson Engineers, he's the one that did the surveying on it, says a letter to Darla Stevens, Century 21. And he will, he says in here, "You will note that the required setbacks in the drainage easement are shown on the site plan. We also found an existing sewer line which does not have a recorded easement, given the location of the drainage easement and the sewer line, coupled with required building setbacks and the subdivision covenants on the building size. It's our opinion that golf course lot 115 is not a buildable lot." The reason he says that is the homeowners association has a minimum building requirement of 1,600 square feet with a, with a thorough market value of $150,000, I think it is. And so even a small cabin, you know, wouldn't work in that situation. And just to add one more footnote, again, before the city took control over this subdivision, Cardinal Drive down to the bottom, past Waxford, it goes almost next to Country Club Estates, and then it narrows up from like a 50 to a 30-foot right of way. Goes up and serves three more lots, I think it is, and then it just dead-ends. There's no cul-de-sac. And as I understand, that the owner, the end of that dead-end road, he wants road service, snowplow, you know, that kind of stuff. But he won't let the snowplow onto his land to turn around. Well, the option there is to back all the way up Cardinal Drive until the next intersection. With golf course lot 115, you could actually back down that, probably about 300 feet down Cardinal Drive, and turn into that, and then be able to turn that trunk around. And it's also access for servicing lift station. You know, good, bad, or ugly, I mean, it's there. This is a...
But there's no other lots pass on top of the hill that has the same situation.
Not with this in mind.
One, one or two times, Scott. Any other questions on that one?
I make a motion to approve the purchase of that lot.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried? Thank you. The next item is leasing out the clubhouse at the golf course. The vision kind of is a restaurant with liquor license. We have, I've received a lot of feedback that people would like to have more of a menu selection there after they golf, and also the option of something besides beer and wine to drink. And I've had a couple of business owners in town approach me with, looking for an opportunity to expand and possibly lease out the clubhouse. You know, part of that, I mean, still need it for pro shop and paying for the rounds of golf, et cetera. But as far as the kitchen and the bar area, they're looking to lease that out. That would be part of, yes, part of the dining room as well. This is just basically whether you guys would like us to move forward entertaining the idea of leasing out the clubhouse. And then we would work with, Carol has told me that we would have to put that out for bid. So I'm... Well, there is a land kitchen there, and the leasee would have to decide it, you know. So we wouldn't be responsible for that. That is what I've told all of them.
Being the lease.
We, that would be all part of the lease agreement. And it would just be, you know, I don't want to move forward working with Carol unless you guys are okay with leasing out the clubhouse.
Without that clubhouse, golfers would make it. So...
They're not leasing out the entire clubhouse.
Right.
No, we're not, but you don't think the alcohol sales and stuff out there helps the golf course any? I believe it does. You can see how much food and stuff she goes to.
They still do that.
Huh? Yeah, but not for the city.
We can decide how we do the contract. If we do beer sales for, you know, to take out in the car, we could still keep doing that if we wanted. I mean, it just depends.
I'm not, I'm not big on that. I have a lot of questions, I guess. You'd have to have a contract so you still receive the same amount, and then they're gonna have to do a percentage above. In other words, the city's gonna lose even more. I just, I keep, in the back of my mind, I keep thinking about Meadowbrook that leaves the golf course for Rapid City, is they cannot make it work. Now, if a course that big can't make the restaurant work, how do these people think they're gonna make it work? Which is, it's not our concern, I realize that, but I, I agree with Craig. I mean, without that clubhouse, that thing will lose even more money.
But that's not going away.
Yeah, well, I can't believe anybody would want to lease it and not get the beer sales.
Well, I go back to thinking about what I have seen at other venues, such as up in Sturgis. At the Buffalo Chip, they rent out a building on all lease. I don't know how many years, I think it's five-year lease. But he gets a percentage of the gross, not the net, the gross, on top of the leasing amount.
Yeah, but Buffalo Chip's a little bit different than our golf course. They only go a week. We go a year round, and he makes enough to close it down and do it right the year.
The lease would be year-round in January where you're not selling one beer. You could be getting revenue. You get sales tax and a leasing. In January, February, when you're not getting golf rounds or beer sales into the carts.
Aren't we under contract with Kathy for the food services?
Kathy's well aware of this and is actually much in favor of it.
Just wanna get out of food.
No, I...
We'd have to, they'd have to buy a liquor license from there.
A restaurant license, yeah. We don't have any more liquor licenses, but we did just approve the restaurant licenses.
They'd have to have how much food to get a restaurant license?
60%. Well, that would be up to the leasee to make it work, if someone chose to go into a...
If I don't have to make it work, then it fell back on us. You may lose a lot of your audience and make it a little angry with you.
It can't be any more obsessive.
I'd like to pay the terms, I wasn't thinking about, I guess.
Well, I can't, I'm not gonna even entertain the idea if you guys don't want me to. I'm just proposing it.
We can't make a decision on, I'm just kind of a wimp here. I mean, we need something to go off of.
She's just, she's just proposing it and wants a consensus from the council.
There would absolutely be a contract with Carol, you know, orchestrating it.
We would have to see the contract. That's, we do those other contracts, so...
It's just...
Does it run by the golf committee?
The...
The golf committee, the golfers out there that use the clubhouse all the time. Who's in there?
They're the ones going, hey, I'd like to have something besides beer and wine and a sandwich from Subway that's shipped up there.
The 100 people that have memberships?
All those 300 people that are out there today are probably, some of those wouldn't mind.
Right, we have over 300 guys out there.
High school kids, very clever.
Their parents.
Well, we, yeah, we have over 300 people there yesterday, today, and tomorrow in October. I mean, that's...
Because there's a golf, there's...
And they're having to go, I mean, you know, we benefit one way or the other. They're going into town to eat, so it's not like we're losing, losing. But it's much more convenient for them to eat there and we don't have, and that's the point, is they have to actually go, you know, hike downhill, get their car, drive into town. They, they're not from here, they don't know where to go. It's just inconvenient.
I think it's, it's perpetrating another business that could be valuable in connection with the golf course. And if we can get a contract, somebody that wants to lease it and pay a piece of the profit back to city on top of the leasing amount, go for it.
I don't, I disagree. We're taking away from the businesses downtown in January, in Furbage, trying to make a living.
The businesses that are interested are already in Hot Springs.
I know they are, but they're not every one of the restaurants in town. There's quite a few places deep in town that we're gonna be taking away from them, putting something up there. The city's gonna be doing this. That, why don't we open our own gas station, stop by that? I mean, we're competing against other businesses in town if we do this. Even if we're leasing out, we're still competing against other restaurants.
A person competing against other business to be the business that goes in there.
I think you ought to contact the people that leave Open Biz Mark. They went down this route. They ended up having to pay to reach back space just to sell for punch purchases to allow people on the course, so I don't know. I'm a guest, that's just me.
Well, we have, and if we move forward tonight, we clearly would all have input on how the contract moves forward if we entertain the idea at all. I've got a couple guys up here with comments.
So you mentioned a restaurant license. What does the restaurant license entail, being able to serve?
They have to sell 60% of their revenue.
Okay, but if there are, if there's no liquor licenses left, how is that going to...
A restaurant license is 60% food and then they can sell liquor as well, but it can't be the main thing that they're selling. Go ahead.
I don't think it's a restaurant license, it's a restaurant liquor license.
Liquor license, yeah, yeah.
Which is...
Thank you.
That's, that's the license that you issued for Windia.
Correct. That's correct. It's just something to think about, talk about.
I don't have any problem with you looking into it and seeing what kind of deal you can come up with. I wonder if they're thinking this through, these people you're talking to, because I think they'll have to put an Hansel hood in up there. And a lot of money's gonna have to come out of their pocket to make this thing work for them. Plus, give us a big chunk of the profits.
And if it fails, we gotta, we gotta maintain everything they do.
Well, I don't, I mean, go ahead and see what you can come up with. I mean, I don't think the city should have to pay a dime to, for them to get set up up there.
Okay. We can set up the contract any way we want or not. I'm, I'm just sharing with you that I get a lot of feedback that we don't have the services that people expect from a clubhouse at a golf course right now. Karen was next, and I'll get to you, Al.
I was just wondering if that would be up into the public?
Yes.
And if it was gonna be more of an upscale type clubhouse restaurant?
Yes.
And so therefore probably interfere with a lot of places, because it's a different, you know, it's more of an upscale...
We can't hear you, I can hear you, but not everybody can, so...
I was just wondering what style of restaurant it would be? Because if it was more of an upscale restaurant, then you're, you know, you're in a different area than a lot of other restaurants.
That would, that would be my personal recommendation and the people who've come forward to inquire about it, understand that that would be the expectation. Yes. Val?
I have no decision or choice either or, but I will say that prior to this state tournament that's taking place now, many of us got together and met and talked about things. And a lot of those businesses, nonprofits, things like that, put things together to give to all these people that promoted a lot of the businesses in town. So I will say in that respect, like, right now, we need 150 kids. You're looking at maybe three adults per kid that are in our community using our motels and eating in our other places, probably more than our golf course could accommodate. But many of us come together often discounts, Woolies, restaurants, all these places to, to prop, the whole community to profit from it. That was just something about the state tournament. So if we had all of that, it would affect some of the other businesses in town as far as getting a little piece of it. I mean, not a lot, but you never know.
I have talked to all the business owners in town with liquor licenses and they are aware that this is on our agenda tonight. A couple of them said they'd be here tonight, they're not here, but they, I've, I've talked to the restaurants with liquor licenses and they're aware that we're voting on this or propose, that I'm proposing that we vote on it tonight, so...
I'd like to make a motion to move forward.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
What exactly is the motion?
Make a motion.
To move, to discuss with the attorney a lease agreement for the...
Bring it back to the...
The council.
Yeah. Do I need to count the all in favor again, or where are you guys at?
So the motion is you're gonna talk to the attorney to come up with a lease agreement for the council to look at.
A proposal and then we can, you know, just have something to talk about and then, yes. I, I'm not going to engage the attorney if we're not in favor of moving forward with this.
This again would be something that we'd have to go up for bid?
Yes.
I don't want you to make your favor. We don't know much about it, but I'll go along with finding out more.
Okay. Yeah, this is, do you want to find out more? Okay. I'm going to ask again. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Two, three, Tim?
I don't know if I would. I'm for it.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I'll talk to Carol about it.
We're doing that again. We already know that from our budget. We know what we budgeted, we don't know what we're talking about. Now, we're there, we're well driven, we know what we budgeted. Anyway, I'd like to see those.
I really just wanted you to know that, you know, it's something that I get a lot of feedback on and I have now asked Carol to work on a lease agreement because I wanted to make sure it wasn't, you know, just wanted to give people... Six to two, so I'm gonna give Carol a call. Thank you for the questions on that. The next item, City Hall windows painting, document shredding, and cleaning. We have a swarm of wasps and a family of bats living upstairs. We have broken windows. In your packet, Scott did a summary. There's 21 windows up there. He didn't exactly say how many were broken, but several are broken. They're all single pane. Most, I think all of them are missing glazing. You know, we're losing a lot of heat out the second story of City Hall. We did start the document shredding today. I said a ton and Scott looked at me like it's way more than a ton. And we overloaded their, their truck. So we started the document shredding, but they're gonna have to come back. We're, we are going out for an estimate on painting in front of City Hall to see, you know, what kind of ballpark we're in there. In your packet, I didn't get the estimate yet. I was hoping to get that today, but I did not. And then you have in your packet, you know, the information on the windows. And then we're gonna look to get some cleaning done upstairs as well. And Debbie's kind of working on that. But, you know, I think the main thing that's gonna cost some money is, you know, if we want to invest in the windows for upstairs to keep the wasps and bats out. Debbie can vouch for the bats?
Well, I guess I'm confused. Are, are you, there's no price for any of the windows. So is this an information item or are we looking to get it somewhere?
I mean, I'm okay with this being just information tonight, but I really would like to go farther with this and, and, you know, go get some estimates and especially on the windows. We're, we're just losing a lot of money out the windows there and we've got critters coming in and it's just not a good thing for City Hall to have to deal with, I don't think.
Can I speak up? You know, we, we still don't have our, our accounting balance with the city. We still don't. Until we know where we stand financially with the city, how can we... You know, I agree this needs to be done. But we need to get our house in order financially.
We know what we have in the bank. We know what budgets were for last year. Debbie has informed me that we have at least 25,000 available to invest in City Hall the remainder of this year. It's just how we want to spend.
It's in that budget.
Yeah. Is that right?
Yeah, because in that building budget and the general government...
So, we can continue to pay a lot in propane or we can, and have it just literally go out cracked windows or we can take care of our own.
You're looking at double pane windows?
I would definitely prefer to, yeah. And I don't know, you know, do we start with the cracked ones? Do we start, you know, do we do glazing? I'm just, it's just, I think it's just pathetic that we've got the situation upstairs and I'd like you guys to be willing to invest in City Hall.
It all depends on how you do it. If you get the insert that said a double pane that's put inside the existing framework, they're not too bad. They're three, four hundred bucks a unit.
The other way is a thousand bucks a unit. Yeah, there's no reason to do the other way.
It's upstairs, you know. It looks the same as it would now. It's just double pane put inside the framework.
Make a motion that, yeah, we go for bid with the windows.
Okay, second. Any other discussion? So it'll be clear. All in favor of going out for bid for windows for upstairs at City Hall? Those opposed?
No. No, just 'cause I'm worried about spending money.
Okay. Motion carried on going out for bid for windows. All right. The next item is the one I, we need to table because they brought the document to City Hall today and I am not going to sign it without the owners of the property signing it first. That's typically how we do it and they did not do that. So the realtor will be, the people live in California and the document will be sent to them. Once they sign it, then we'll put it back, put this back on the agenda. Let your plat up tracks, what we're not doing. The next item is this proclamation, lights on after school. I think the quick summary is the state asking us to provide good after-school programs. Are you familiar with this, Val? The lights on after school proclamation? I mean, I think Boys and Girls Club kind of, we're doing that, we're supporting Boys and Girls Club.
Yeah, and the South Dakota After School Partnership, they're collecting signatures over the past few months and they're asking that cities sign the proclamation that's being shared during the after-school day capital on February 4th to leverage power of the municipal voice to impact programs and policies for South Dakota's children and youth. So it's just, you, you already don't, you're giving money to Boys and Girls Club in support of after-school activities and programs.
So, we do need to, we need to uphold this proclamation, but I think we, we're doing that with Boys and Girls Club at least.
So do we need a motion to go through it?
Debbie tells me we do, so I'm gonna say we do. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, I will sign that.
I'll sign it and then I'll send it on to, to tell me to send it and then they present it.
Put it in the stack on my desk for tomorrow. I will do that before we go spirit fish. Thank you, Debbie. So motion carried on that. In your packet, we do have estimates for the branded city signs for the airport and golf course with pricing. We've already done the Kidney Springs one. This is something that Harley was working on. I'd like to continue that because I think it is nice to have these branded city signs. We do not have signage at the golf course at all, really, on 71 and we don't have signage on 18. Yep, Scott?
By, by branded signs, are these gonna look like the same signs we see as we enter the city? Good deal, good deal.
Thank you. And we have the new sign at Kidney Springs. So the last item on, on your proposal from your packet, we've already purchased. The others were not, you know, because of the return of the aid and we got the Kidney Springs sign down.
Where would you get this money from?
Thought we had grant for signs, didn't we? Use that.
No, we paid about $30,000 for the other signs.
We had some grant money for it.
Bid, bid, group paid the other half.
Bid board, that's what it was, yeah.
Why wouldn't we put the other sign on 71 before we do the sign at the golf course and the airport? Welcome to Hot Springs.
The, the one on 71 will also say Southern Hills Golf Course. So it's, it's kind of two for the price of one on that one. So it'd say Hot Springs like we have on these entrance signs, but on the bottom, like the Kidney Springs one, it would say Southern Hills Golf Course. So it'd still have the Hot Springs logo on it.
So it's south of the entrance to the golf course?
It would be, I don't, is that Sandviper or whatever that road is off of? Middle Lark, off of 71. So it would, it would be kind of an entrance to Hot Springs sign like we have at all of our other entrances, but it would also say Municipal Golf Course.
We have the money for this sign?
You're talking $25,000 if you try to do these three signs?
$26,952.
The installation's probably...
Well, we, like the Kidney Springs sign, because I, you know, don't know the full picture. Like I said, Harley started this. We need to get back to the company, whether we're moving forward with these or not. Like I said, we already did the one. Harley's understanding was we had the money to do this. That's why we went out and did this and started with the one sign. I'm fine with entertaining something less than the other three if that's, you know, what you're comfortable with. But we do get a lot of feedback that there's no city entrance sign on 71 and the sign at the airport is backwards unless you're coming from the south.
People can't figure out what that big long piece of runway is.
I didn't even know it was a sign there. Not after dark. And...
We don't have any commercial airlines flying in here after dark, so... I, I think we ought to table this till we find out where this money would even come from because you're, you're talking $26,000 now.
I think it's a good idea, but let's find this, get the audit done, get everything so we start with a clean slate, financially balanced.
Well, the audit that we're working on is for 2013.
But we've got to get that done before we know we have a fortune.
Well, we do know what we have in the...
You got bills to write, you're...
But I know that our, it was not reconciled with the general ledger, our bank account. Check, check with, check with the audit.
The one that you can't contact, because you won't call you back.
Right.
The only thing I'm worried about is, like, our contingency fund. Harley says it's all in his head. He ain't wrong to tell us when it's in his head that we did and didn't spend our contingency. So I have no idea what we have in there. Does anybody?
Does the bid board have any more money to put, pay signs?
I don't think so. I don't know that for a fact, but I don't think so.
I'm gonna ask and see if they do.
I mean, I like the direction we're going. I like the new signs we got. I think they look nice.
I just, I didn't know we had the money first.
I would go for disapproving the one on 71 for now and then waiting on the other three till we get the audit done.
Okay, so that's number one.
Is that number one?
That's a golf course.
But it's the one that we want.
It's gonna say welcome to Hot Springs and then have you...
Well, it'll say Hot Springs.
That's the 12 pound dollar.
Yeah, that is.
Well, it's double sided.
It's double sided. But it would be the same Seven Sisters Hills.
Is it gonna be facing as you're coming into Hot Springs, you see it? Or is it gonna be sitting on the side of roads, you turn to go golf course, you see it?
It's double sided, so it would be perpendicular to 71, so you'd see it north or south. So do we want to do just a motion for item number one?
That's my motion.
Oh, second.
Any other discussion on that?
I, I'd like to see. I'm, I'm pretty sure we've had some money set aside for golf course. I'm just, I'm just trying, we need to find out where that is. I like, I agree with that, with motion too.
Should just do the one?
Well, and if you guys figure out where the money's coming from, we can bring it back for the next meeting.
Okay. Okay, so I'm fine with just doing it for one. And all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye. Show me the money.
Motion carried. Move forward with sign number one, which is the double sided sign on, for 71. All right, and then the last item in the new business is the opening bid. November 13th for City Hall demolition of the Community Action Building. Address, but we all know it, a couple of doors down from City Hall.
I guess I have a question. We already went out to bid once. We got bids and we didn't have the money to do it. So why are we...
We were asked by the Historical Committee to go out for bids again with the SOS Building and the Community Action Building. And it got sent to Public Works and we talked about it in the last meeting and we really don't have the authority to do anything with the SOS Building yet from what we were told. But we do have a judge's order that we can tear down the Community Action Building. And we decided that going into winter, we might get some more life on the bids again. Some contractors want winter work, so we decided we'd go out and try it again and go for bid again on the...
And we don't have the $50,000 that we put in the budget for that, am I right? for that, am I right? Oh, Scott's gone.
Scott was claiming there's forty-five thousand.
I thought he said thirty.
That's what he said when we spent five thousand of the fifty thousand budget to tear buildings. Hard to tell without the administrator.
But we are gonna have a bid opening on November thirteenth.
I don't think this needs council approval.
Yeah, it's just FYI, there's no bullet beside it, it's FYI. Debbie's helping me out here.
She don't make no decision, I guess.
Oh, do you? She's keeping me straight. So that's just your information and we'll move forward with the bid process.
That's what I'm saying, is the council makes a decision when the bids come in.
Alright, Tim and Dwight, thanks for working on that. Appreciate that. We'll go into the committee reports. Carl?
We didn't have a meeting. We have a meeting coming up before the next council meeting, the Wednesday before. But I did wanna communicate that I have picked up thirteen code and nuisance violations, and I will be working on them the rest of this week. Looking them over, going over each of the properties and getting back to you, Ellen.
Great, I really appreciate that.
And Scott.
Yeah, we'll overlook Scott.
I did have something to mention on that. Carl and I have been working on the personnel manual, and Scott has been addressing getting the safety manual, which we will probably have a part in here to serve. And I'd like to have some kind of time where we could actually work on that as a council.
Tomorrow. I wish, Debbie won't let me.
Anyway...
There's a lot of, lot of work to do after City Council meeting.
Yeah, so I, I would like to set a date to work on these as a council, so... I don't know how council feels about that. I won't be back until the twentieth, so...
Why don't we come up with a date at the twentieth?
You wish.
So you won't be available on the twentieth, but...
So it'll be have to be after our next meeting.
I would like you to just propose a date that we can discuss on the twentieth. And then we'll let you know when you come back.
Alright.
If we agree with that date or not.
And if anybody would like to get a copy of each of these, I appreciate if they would, we'd turn it over then. And Scott has this, but I think Mary can print out both over for you, so...
So that will be, the safety manual will be included with the employee policy manual that we've all kinda taken a couple looks at, but we're not final on it yet, so... Okay, Public Works, Dwight, did you have anything else, or...
Couple things. The sewer plant was inspected on the twenty-third of September by DNR, Department of Natural Resources, and we got all thumbs up from them. And they're happy to hear that the trickle filter will be getting fixed. And our water system will be inspected next week by DNR.
I think it was, I think they were in talking to Tracy today.
Oh, they're here, okay. Well, I guess, yeah, last week was this week's. Imagine that.
Time just flies by.
And the pressure-reducing valves are in, and we instructed Tracy and our crew to get them in as soon as possible.
I see Four Street's still working on their project.
See, a lot of the paving was done.
No, they've been working on Four Street all, all the last couple days. It's supposed to be done by the first.
I only saw a skid loader up there, wasn't some dude around?
There was a big, narrow hole, a dump truck, all sorts of stuff.
They're not done?
No, drive up there. And they're digging, they had a big, huge, probably six-foot hole.
Did they?
Yeah. Dirt everywhere, and they were digging by hand, too.
Ah, that's not a good sign.
They were up there at, as a matter of fact, six o'clock just before I came up. Road was blocked, they had a little skid loader. It's a mess up there.
What I'm getting at is, we're supposed to start charging them after due date, we gave them a couple days, those rain days, but that was all last week.
Well, if it's part of the contract, part of the contract.
Part of the contract. And the signs aren't up yet? They're messed up, they have to do stuff.
I say that all has to be addressed on final payment?
Yeah, Tracy...
I don't know why they'd be digging again, but, by your house?
Yeah, it's just, I'm at Foreign University, so it's just that next street down on Fourth. You know where that vacated house is?
I don't know what that was about.
South or north?
South.
I noticed there was a, there was a hole in the side of the road in the four-hundred block south, but that was in front of somebody's house. It wasn't in the street.
No, it's not right in the middle of the street. They got the street blocked off. It's right on the side.
Wasn't city guys?
No.
Okay. I don't, I don't know. Tracy and I talked earlier today, but not...
We're looking out, we had to hold to Tracy 'cause Kemp came, made the problem, but by her mailbox and stuff, it's pure mud, and you put some gravel and stuff.
When it rains, it's, I mean, it's, I would just advise every one of you guys to drive up there. I mean, we've dealt with them all summer. It is one mess.
Guys still gonna hurt your water.
I have to call in to report, just to cover your guys' butt, to have them go drop cones. And there's two different liability issues because of them. And I personally called Cindy and said, get some cones out there, 'cause you're gonna have a lawsuit with that. I mean, they're a joke. But that's my opinion.
Next. Wait, is that it, Dwight?
Yeah, that's all I got.
Code ordinance, Carl's taking that over. Parks, recreation and beautification. Wes is the chair, and Craig's gonna join that committee as well. Wes, do you wanna give an update?
Tall Grass was here. They gave us a couple options for Butler Park. Pretty much that's what I thought, we kinda stuck to the meeting and just basically talked about that. The playground equipment, I thought was ordered at the last meeting. There were several issues, but it turns out, I guess, by delaying it, it was on sale, so I guess we saved a little money by waiting.
Good job, Wes.
I don't know, I hope it, I hope it's a done deal now.
We just paid for it, really.
Was that? No, it don't. I, that's kinda mainly, not all we did was basically look at those two options for Butler, and talk about other parks and things. They're gonna come back at the end of the month, I believe. Just some more file.
The thirtieth or twentieth?
The thirtieth, I don't know, but remember anything else?
Is the rest of the council gonna be purviewed to see all of these options?
We're having...
You're welcome to come any meeting.
Yeah, we're gonna leave Art in the next meeting.
Everyone's welcome to come to these meetings and have, you know, a little say in the matter. I mean, some of it's, it's going forward, but...
Yeah, Art from our Parks Department will be at the next meeting, so, you know, we don't do anything that you can't support.
Are you gonna have cookies?
It's up to the community, right?
Are you gonna have cookies and stuff?
Could have, if we had a little pass notice.
We had cookies last meeting.
We did have cookies last meeting. Cookies are not guaranteed every time, though. Thanks, Wes, and thanks for moving forward, getting that order in. I know it was a difficult decision, 'cause you wanna do what's right for the kids. Public Safety will report at the next meeting in busy Georgia. And she had her advocates meeting, so...
Sure. Okay, so I met on the twenty-sixth with Chris at the Mueller Center and Theodore, well, actually, it was at Evans Plunge. And the Mueller Center, he talked about different things he's still working on. He's framing pictures down here in the dishwasher that we talked about getting. He has the two-hundred chairs and ten tables that he's planning on getting this year.
Whoa, whoa. I know, we're extending.
It's coming here, it's coming, yeah.
Next year.
In January, it's coming here, he's got it ready.
No, no, we, we extended that in favor of the dishwasher.
The dishwasher and the chairs, he's going to order some chairs.
It wasn't all of them, it was some stuff.
Yeah, yeah, there were some chairs he was going to order. The water department found the leak, and so that was good. We had it out here.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And it was actually from the internet that went in and went between two pipes that weren't, and actually, that was from a long time ago. Apparently, the water lines weren't marked in there. The cooling unit is in and hooked up, and Cornell did the electrical, so that was a cheaper price. And the signs, let's see, he was gonna have some signs put out for the parking. Let's see. Projector, he's still planning on getting that so we can have videos upon the screens in our theater area. And he was trying to improve more activities for the school, and he's looking at school charging the school market they have more use. And then advertising with other departments, too, so we combine our advertisements. And Theodore gave a real good update on things that were going on in Evans Plunge. We talked about some of the different rates that we might be looking at. Painting is going on right now, everybody should go look at that. He's been working on the employee handbook, and that's really a good update down there. We do have a new maintenance person, Chris Wilson. And there's cameras on the pool side, so that's a change. Hope that will help some of the issues that we've had. And let's see, training, he talked about that. Silver sneakers, we're looking into that for membership, and we go through insurance.
It's actually silver and fit, in case anybody wants to look it up. The sneakers part is wrong.
Oh, silver and what?
Silver, silver and fit.
And fit, okay. So anyway, there's progress, he's looking at so we can have the insurance paid for memberships. He'd like to work on the deck and gutters and the rails that are in the hot tub area. And the golf course.
Hey, is there, are the windows forecasted in that, too? Any of that budgeting?
What windows?
Maintenance in the front, the bracket and rope.
Um, those got replaced with wood.
Oh, they did, just like...
Yeah, they're, and we got it in there, and we got it all caulked in and trimmed, so they could paint those over.
So, then I also met at the golf course with Jason, and Cal commented he needs to get some of the cement removed from the old pro shop and the water line and old pump house. Some of those things need to be updated, or removed and cleared yet. Bids for the remodeling of the aprons and storage on both sides of the new building that we built, he's looking at doing that. He said City could probably help level some of the landscape, 'cause we still have some landscape issues back there. He came in last time and talked about inmate transport, and Cindy, I guess you were working on some of that?
I'm ready to meet on the twenty-second.
And long-range plan, he's working on that. He should be done with that in October. When we had the survey up there, some of the things that were on that survey was forest doing change, maybe looking at some of the increase, maybe some of the rates are at least evaluated. He wants to improve the number of rounds that are being played out there with our new computer system. People can go online and get their tee times. And we're, go from twelve to fifteen thousand, and he's looking at possibly having twenty thousand rounds instead. You know, if we, whatever we can do to increase that, that's what's the main thing. We lost Frank, the mechanic, and he would like to hire a full-time employee for doing some of the work up there. The pro shop and promotional general manager organization restructure some of that, and we talked about that tonight, just doing some of the bids on, in the main office there. The cross-country run, we did have complaints that we didn't have it there. However, it does take away from our tee times, too, when we have that, but it has been a draw for our golf course just to have the cross-country run up there, so... Yeah, the pro shop, she wanted to get more security lighting up, or cameras up there. And it's just had gas siphoning going on, and those things could probably be monitored easier. A courtesy car for the handicapped people that park down below. It's kind of a bad way the parking situation is up there. There's concern for safety for the employees after work, so they have to go down below, and it's kind of a long, dark area, at eleven o'clock at night sometimes, so those things are kind of a concern. Handicapped parking, they suggested maybe they should do something where up closer to the carts might be a better place. But I don't know, there's issues that need to be reevaluated up there. And contract parties, she was interested in maybe looking at some of that and charging per hour, so that would be another income. Then the library, I did go and talk to Cindy, that was also on the twenty-sixth, and she would like to ask county for an increase in the budget that they're giving to the library. So next year, we should keep that in mind when we are doing our request to the county for the library. Cindy and Dawn went for recertification. The log building on the outside has been, the maintenance of it has been completed, so if you go by and take a look at the outside, you should notice an improvement. Insight is not done yet. She did go to the conference for the SDLA, October first, second, and third. And Dawn was presenting a team program. If you go up there, you might ask her a little bit about that, but she's worked really hard on that, new library. So it's a good, good program that she's developed. The State Library Report Card was on September twenty-fifth, and we should have presentation in the newspaper and conference for the council to read coming up. I'm not sure what date they should send that out, but it was accredited, accredited by, on September first, and legislators to take care of recognition on that. Fall semester classes start in October. There's storytimes and movies and a bunch of other things. They did have low attendance, however, on September eighteenth when Gordy Pratt was here. And somehow, we need to encourage people to come. That's one of their fundraisers. Mary Galay is going to present her book on October ninth up there at the library, is that right? Yes. And, and then the carnival is October thirty-first at the Mueller Center. Friends of the Library fundraiser also. And the triathlon was a real good success this year. If you went out and watched that, there were quite a few, I think there were a hundred and... It was a blast in last year, but it was a good, good run. And National Card Library Month was in September, and Robert Newland had a card holder of four thousand eight hundred and ninety. Okay? And then I, I did go to the airport. So the airport had a special meeting. We talked about the grazing of the cattle out there, the seed, selling the seed, the excess seed. We talked about the gliders. I did go out and visit during the gliders presentation, how to put a glider together, that was interesting. And every Saturday, they do give rides on occasion, so if you're ever out there and you wanna go and look at our library, it's really a fascinating thing to see. I mean, the airport, I'm sorry. Go up there and see it, and they... And they are really excited, and they wanted to thank the city very strongly that they built that for them, because they've been carrying them around in carts, and it takes a long time to put them together, and this is really a good thing.
And we do get, we do have at least.
And we do have a revenue. We have gotten income from it, so it is paying for it.
All right.
There you go.
This is why I don't want to rush it. You're doing too much already, so. Debbie, was there anything that you would like to bring up as?
Let's bring one thing up.
Oh, yeah.
The public safety, the police department's supposed to be giving that presentation. Can we move that up in the agenda? Because both times, we're not getting any reports.
It's been, since it started, we've never had a report.
They're only gonna report on the second Monday.
No, but we've still, we've never had a report.
Yeah, he gets called out, and he leaves, and he's clear at the end of the agenda. Can we move him up?
Well, I asked, I actually asked him to come later instead of, but I mean, I'm, I'm open to that.
I don't know, we just, we haven't heard anything since all that whole thing switched.
I think somebody from the city still needs to be on that committee or that public safety. I really do, because we've had no communication for over three months with the police department. I have, is anyone else?
Two to three times.
Kind of just be interesting to hear their report and see what's going on.
Yeah, well, as you know, there's gonna be changes there, so.
What's that?
Still will be changes in the police department.
I understand.
I definitely will look into that, but they're only reporting once a month. It would be on the, you know, the third, the second meeting in the month, the third one. I respect your input, and I agree we've got an issue there. I wanted you all to be aware that, you know, there was a discussion while I was gone, and I think Harley had started a discussion for a pre-buy for propane. Discussed this with Public Works, and I did move forward and talked to Heidi Way, who provided the pre-buy for the county. And they weren't super excited about giving us the same price as the county, because it's one tank where we have, I think, six. But out of the goodness of their heart, or maybe the whining mayor, they did give us the dollar seventy-five per gallon for citywide tanks, so we need to be aware of that. We got a buck eighty-five from Nelson's and a buck eighty-five from.
We declined to bid it, thank you. We didn't bid it. You need to be aware of that state bid price also. You need to be watching that versus this. We didn't give a price.
They did, Mary, but it doesn't matter.
No, they didn't, because I was sat in their conversation.
Okay, she made up a number then. I don't know what to tell you.
I do, I was sat in there when the conversation was had. He told them we were no longer doing pre-buy, and that ended it previous week.
That's why we are, and Heidi Way from Edgemont did agree to do a pre-buy for the City Pot Springs for a dollar seventy-five. So we are, Tracy's gonna work with them on where all of our tanks are and.
But Jason at the golf course uses the state bid price a lot of times, too. That's why I'm saying that state bid price is pretty low. Remember, we can fill the tanks, and I don't know what your pre-buy contract is set up like.
Well, we were able to piggyback off of the county is what we did here.
When you gotta start using it.
Are we?
When do we start using it?
Their, the pre-buy?
Yeah, I guess, can we, can we have the, can we see the contract?
Tracy's working on that with Bill Tanner, I believe his name is.
Yeah.
So it was just today that we worked on that. That's why it's not on your agenda, and just wanted to let you know we're moving forward with that.
City should have seven tanks.
That's why I'm not doing it.
Tracy's doing it.
The big one off the street.
We have chosen to take Personnel Matters into executive session tonight, and we will be taking action. Kurt, so you're aware, after the executive.
That's what he says on your agenda, so.
So.
Motion to go into executive session.
All in favor? And in memory.